Before I call the meeting to order, I would like to note that we have interpretation services for this meeting. The interpreter for this evening is Mrs. Villagrana. Ms. Villagrana, would you raise your hand there in the back? Okay. Please ask her for a listening device if you would like interpretation services. Antes de llamar a la junta orden, me gustaría notar que contamos con servicios de interpretación para esta junta. La interpreta es de ese tarde es la señora Villagrana. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of August 1, 2023. Madam Clerk, would you please make an announcement about accessing the meeting and call the roll?
In order to participate in the City Council Meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link at the top of the agenda. To raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the Raise Hand button in the Zoom portal. If you're using a phone, please press star nine on your telephone keypad and then press star six to unmute your phone. When it is your time to speak, you will be requested to unmute your microphone and speak for the time allotted by the mayor. Your microphone will be muted upon completion of your comments. Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
And Mayor Patino?
Here. City Attorney, Mr. Watson, would you give the closed session report?
Yes, ma'am. The City Council has provided unanimously positive evaluations for both the city manager and the city attorney. Performance-based pay was granted in the parameters previously approved by the budget, and both the city manager and I would like to thank the council for the opportunity to continue to serve the community.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. First item on the agenda this evening is a presentation. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will receive a presentation regarding the alignment project update and present a certificate of recognition to the GROW initiative cohort one graduates.
The presentation is being given by the Chief Human Resources Officer, Lynda Lee. Hello, Ms. Lee. How are you this evening?
Well, good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, honorable council members. Thank you for the privilege to present this item before your board. And just for the record, my name is Lynda Lee, Chief Human Resource Officer for the City of Santa Maria. Thank you, Ms. White, for helping me to advance the slide. The Alignment Project, what is that all about? The City Council in 2019 established the organizational direction for the city of Santa Maria to build more efficient, effective, accountable governance model that strives to achieve the highest customer service at every level of organization. The Alignment Project at that time was intended to create and sustain an organizational culture that continuously strives to improve the quality of service and inspire customer-based solutions linked to the city's mission, the vision, organizational values that accomplish with an engaged workforce. Next slide. These are some of the milestones and schedules since 2019. Over the past four years, staff has made tremendous strides in these areas, beginning with Phase One through Phase Four. Part of the program here is to develop and mobilize our competencies, revise our job descriptions, staff development, and performance management. When I came on board about two years ago, we looked at the 2019 Alignment Project. We reconceptualized this into what we call Alignment Project 2.0 framework. To achieve the City Council's goal, existing city processes needs to be improved, aligned, and fully integrated into business systems that will support this focused, centered culture and encourage exceptional leadership and employee performance. These systems will become the foundations for the city's recruiting, hiring, promoting, employee development, performance management, succession planning, and, of course, marketing. The purpose of the Alignment Project, then, is to accomplish the city's council organizational direction by aligning, professionalizing, modernizing, and standardizing the city internal processes. The framework here is developed in such a way that is anchored by coaching, mentoring, employee engagement activities, Foundation for Excellence, and ultimately Employee Recognition The Alignment Project provides exciting opportunities for employees. The focus is on continual learning and development, and, of course, recognition of performance. With that effort, the learning and development component grew in 2022, June of 2022. At that time, we truly strive to take a look at what are some of our continuous partnerships through our education's community. And all of us here at the city contribute towards that advancement of our city as a whole. What is important is that we endeavor to learning, development, and engagement. Beginning with that, we partner with the University of Santa Barbara Professional and Continuing Education, known as UCSB PACE, to develop a formal program here at the city called Management Training for Public Administrator Certificate Program. This program is funded through the State of California grant, supported by the University of California Office of President. Next slide. The program requires learners to meet once a week for a total of 15 weeks. The GROW program costs, if our employees were to do this onsite directly at UCSB program, will cost them $5,000 per person. But because of our partnership and through the state-funded program, we are able to bring this program here onsite, 15 weeks for one day per week. Through the state this program, our employees are able to afford this program at $500 per person. The program requires the learners to complete the program. The capstone project, we're looking at nine to 10 cohorts per program, and is partnered with UCSB instructor-led training. Next slide. I'm very proud to announce that in 2022, the planning and designing curriculum, looking at the program itself, just really took shape in January of 2023. By April of 2023, the city has an inaugural class comprised of nine employees representing four departments from the city manager's office, finance, community development, and public works. These nine employees have a combined 78 years of City of Santa Maria's institutional knowledge. To achieve the management training for Public Administrator Certificate, each learner must have complete a minimum of 120 hours of instruction. In classes that consist of project management, building high-team performing teams, collaborative dispute resolution, negotiation and influence strategies, foundations of leadership, foundations of accounting, budgeting, marketing principles, organizational and personal branding, decision-making, foundations of human resources and ethics. In addition to this required completion of a minimum of 120 hours of instruction, the cohort was also required to complete a capstone project, synthesize and demonstrate what they learned throughout the 15 weeks. Collectively, they spent over 1,300 hours to achieve a gold seal certificate program from a world-renowned higher education institution of UCSB that also housed six Nobel Prize laureates. Please rise. These are your GROW cohort graduates' number-one class. So, what is the capstone project? It was designed to engage and synthesize the learning of 15 weeks. And this cohort set out a very strong mission statement. As a class, their mission statement is, "The city of Santa Maria embraces diversity, inclusiveness, and collaboration to address local issues." Next slide. The capstone project is to develop a comprehensive language access policy that would promote greater access to city services, programs, and resources for individuals with limited English language proficiency. The task was to assess and identify existing resources as our city continues to grow and expand services and our residents who speak not only Spanish but Tagalog and Mesteco. This employee survey demonstrated that within the cities, we have such a robust language comprises more than 12 languages, in addition to Spanish-speaking. I'm very impressed by this data, because not only do we have an opportunity to really look internally and build our translation and our interpretation services to meet our community needs, including Spanish, Mesteco, and Tagalog, but we've also identified additional languages that's currently housed by the talents of our workforce. Next slide. In addition to the basic classes that they have learned through the UCSB instructors, they also learned the basic principle of Lean Six Sigma to develop such business process improvements. Through this capstone project, they call it "Let's Talk, Santa Maria," the intention here is to signal an invitation for meaningful dialogue, both communicating the city's services but also listening to the needs and desires of every segment of our community. This quad summary report highlights as follows. The blue quadrant, using the Lean Six Sigma, to develop a project charter, keeping them anchored into the in-scope of the project. The yellow quadrant here talks about the communication and training plan, standardizations, what would be the next step to implement this program. The orange quadrant highlights the benefits that are truly in alignment with our city's smart city, safe city, and its customer focus. And ultimately, the green quadrant here highlights the accomplishments and the lessons learned from these cohorts. The resulting "Let's Talk, Santa Maria" project recommends enhancements to the city's language access plan with the goal of improving our customer service and our residents' quality of life. That concludes my presentation, and we have a small three-minute and 30-second video to share with all of you about this GROW cohort. Please enjoy. They make me so proud, and I want to say thank you to the City Council for investing in your staff in its endeavor to learning and retaining the excellent workforce and talents we have here. I also wanted to say thank you to our city manager for his trust and his envisioning of the Alignment Project to realize this program as it is today. So at this time, I would like to invite the mayor to present the certificate of achievements to each of our graduate cohort. And before we start, I would also like to recognize the importance of my cohort mentors, Mr. John Wu, who co-project mentored the program with me for 15 weeks. With me, we also have Don Jackson, our library director, who's also served on the Staff Development Committee, designing the program as it is today. I also like to recognize Nikki Plata in the audience, who's my staff, is also responsible for coordinating the programs and the curriculum with me. We are strong, but we truly believe in this wonderful cohort, and we're excited to announce the Cohort Two will begin in two weeks. With 11 employees representing six departments, we cannot wait to bring the Cohort Two back to all of you in the fall. Thank you. So my first call out is Ms. Christina Aguilar. Ms. Erica Anaya. Ms. Alma Mendez. Ms. Nancy Moroz. Ms. Cindy Muto Morrison. Ms. Don Palacios. Mr. Mark Vander Kamp. Ms. Alicia Vela. And finally, Ms. Carol C. Zanhenney. At this time, I would like to invite the entire City Council to step down and have a group photo with the mayor and the city manager. Thank you. Show your certificates.
I felt like we should be playing pomp and circumstance on that one. Lynda Lee, could you get the pomp and circumstance for the second cohort? Any questions from the council? Yes, Ms. Jessica Beto.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to recognize and congratulate all of you guys for doing a little bit more and putting yourself up there and learn more, and I think that talks really highly of I was impressed of the new, the different languages that we have within the city, so that's very important, so I appreciate it. And as it was mentioned by Ms. Lynda, this is an investment, because we believe in you guys growing within the city and retaining and keeping you guys to go up. It's better to have a more qualified staff that can grow within and they don't need to leave. We can better serve our community that is watching us, so congratulations.
You know, I think this is really important to enhance not just the lives and the people in Santa Maria, but your lives, because we're a service industry, basically, and the better services we can provide to our community, the better our community is and the healthier our community is. And so you guys are on win-win on everything, because you are taking that step to make yourself better, but you're also making the city better, and we appreciate that. So thank you very much. And I guess you guys had a good time doing this, right? So I'm seeing all those nods.
It looked fun.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Fedna Segular.
I also want to say, you know, you guys work full-time, have families. This takes extra time, because you also have to complete the work that you have to do, that you were hired to do. So I do appreciate that, and I, you know, want to, you know, really show my gratitude for you guys to not only grow personally, but help the city grow as well. Thank you.
Ms. Soto.
Thank you. Congratulations. 15 weeks, that's pretty intense, so great work, and I can't wait to see what you all, you know, what you all, all the greatness that you'll do with the city. Thank you. So much gratitude, congratulations. I'll keep it at that.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero.
They've said it all, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lee. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
We do not.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, you guys can stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome. The next item on the agenda this evening is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed-session items, or matters not on the printed agenda this evening. If you are participating via Zoom and wish to make a public comment, now is the time to raise your hand in the Zoom portal. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form or request acknowledgement in Zoom.
Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers this evening?
We have two speakers and none on Zoom.
Thank you. And you can set the clock for three minutes. Jose Martin and Gary Hall. Good evening, welcome.
Good afternoon. Councilmembers, my name is Jose Martin. I work for Move Santa Barbara County, formerly known as SB Bike Plus Coast. I just wanted to give my input on some of the bike lanes here in town. Although there have been some improvements, there also have not been a lot. So we moved here in North County, we just finished our six-week summer bike program with youth ages 13 to 26-years-old, and we did a lot of biking around town. And after we finished biking, we usually give them like an hour to debrief, and I asked them like, so what are some improvements that should be made and some good things that happened during our bike ride? And these are some of the suggestions that they came up with. So some are good, some are bad, but it's always good to know which ones are good. So the Levy Trail to the Lupin needs to be open, they want it to be longer. Presskirk Park was cool, so the Parks Department's doing a really good job on that. There should be a bike lane on College by Hancock, and Miller has a bike lane in time. So Miller has a bike lane, but anytime for Eno's. So that same bike lane is to be extended all the way past to Main Street. Public transportation is very accessible, and buses need more bike racks. Jones Street has narrow roads for bikes, and they just recently found out about the Santa Maria Railroad Show for the first time, so it's my first time taking youth out there, and they didn't know about that show before, so now they have access to Walert Park via a bike path or multi-use lane now. And they think the road should be longer as well. And lastly, there should be more multi-use paths, multi-use paths, yeah. And that's pretty much it, that's all I have. No, no, multi-use.
Bike paths.
Yeah, multi-use paths for pedestrians and cyclists.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Thank you, Mr. Martin. And be sure and come to our, our meetings when we do deal the general, the amendments to the general plan because that'll be a good place. And I saw Mr. Fulgo and you writing all those things down. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Escobedo.
Yeah, I just want to add, it would be great if that can be also sent it on, on an email. So we can, we can have it there on the record. Thank you.
Gary, Gary Hall. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. You're welcome again for clearing the room. And I haven't talked that fast in 60 years. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, staff, and citizens of Santa Maria. My name is Gary Hall. I'm a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North River Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Mobile Home Owners Team, or NSBIT. I'm speaking again tonight, and you've heard it before, to once again ask the City of Santa Maria to join over 100 other California jurisdictions that through enactment of rent stabilization ordinances and programs have provided their mobile home residents with protection from excessive rent increases and in that way helped maintain affordable housing for their senior and low-income citizens. The existing model lease does not do that. On June 6th, 2022, Councilmember Soto, Escobedo, and Cordero passed the motion to examine the model lease agreement, looking for ways to improve it and to look at alternatives. Unfortunately, now 14 months later, that work still remains undone. The most recent meeting was held July 21st. I want to thank Councilmember Soto, Assistant City Manager Hackelman, and Assistant City Attorney Patrick for meeting with our mobile home resident representatives. We did continue discussing how our issues and proposed solutions, which we submitted last January, but did not learn of any new constructive counter proposals made by the park owners. We also learned of little, if any, progress in considering alternatives to the model lease. Earlier today, I received notice of a planned follow-up meeting, a very near-term meeting, which I was obligated to reject. Our Mobile Home Rent Stabilization Subcommittee intends to meet next week with our attorney. And we will prepare a written response to the July 21st meeting and schedule its delivery to the City Council prior to your August 15th meeting. We want to continue working to find the pathway that will allow us to meet our goal, which is to provide protection to all Santa Maria mobile home residents presently living in an unregulated rental market where the current model lease program has been ineffective in protecting homeowner equity and maintaining affordable mobile home housing for over five years. That's been our goal, and we continue to believe, given your collective, collective political will, it is achievable. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, did you wish to make any comments? Okay. Moving on to the next item is the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read the description?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
I do, Madam Mayor. Item 12C1.
12C.
Agreements with school districts for law enforcement services.
Okay. Any others? No. Okay.
For further discussion in a separate vote.
Okay. Go ahead. Could you read the item? Yes.
The City Council will consider authorizing the City of Santa Maria to enter into agreements for law enforcement services between the Santa Maria Police Department and Santa Maria Joint Unified High School District, and future agreements for law enforcement services between the Santa Maria Police Department and local school districts.
Okay. Ms. Soto.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll start with the, with the question to Chief Schneider and City Manager. Feel free to, to jump in. My understanding is that the school resource officers, once they're on campus, they are typically in full uniform. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So something that I've heard feedback on from, from students who, who are part of the Joint Union High School District is, is whether or not it would be possible for law enforcement officers who are on campus to be wearing civilian clothing rather than being in full uniform to make themselves more approachable and not seem as intimidating to, to students.
Yeah. So thank you for that question. Actually, just to go back a little bit. In the selection of our school resource officers, we reached out to the school district in advance to make sure they were part of that selection process. So they got to be part of the oral panel to come and meet with the prospective officers to kind of see which one they maybe fit with the particular school, which would be Pioneer and Santa Maria High. And then to your question of what the proper attire would be, I, I reached out to the school district recently to ask them if they had a preference on how they would like the officers to be dressed. And the response they gave was they prefer them to be in a uniform. And the reasoning they stated was three reasons. The, the first one is that the purpose of the school resource officer is to be that visual presence because they're there to, you know, enforce the safety aspect of the campus. And when they have visitors and others on campus that aren't part of the day-to-day, they want them to be seen as a deterrent to others who may be coming on campus to, to cause issues or create some sort of incident. And then the second one was that in their collective experience, what they told me was that they've worked with schools for many, many years collectively. And when students, it's really up to the individual school resource officer to sort of build those relationships, to be mentors and work with the children on campus. And they found that they're, they've been able to do it successfully in a uniform. It's really up to that school resource officer. And what they thought was a positive is that if the school resource officer in uniform can make that bridge on campus, then when the students are away from campus, they'll look at that uniformed officer who's on patrol and come to that same conclusion that they're maybe, maybe equally as approachable as an SRO that may be in some other attire. We did talk about the option of having like a polo if there's a, an assembly or a school event where the school resource officers are going to take part in the activity. And that would be appropriate to have an alternate uniform to kind of work specifically with that student body because obviously that school resource officer would be known to that group of students. So that was their response and request of the police department. Like I said, we try to, every time we approach these contracts, you know, they're reimbursing us obviously for our services. So we want to meet their needs as well. We just, you know, we operate within our policies and procedures, but we do try to take into account their wishes and desires on, on these issues.
Thank you.
I have one other question.
Okay, go ahead.
Do we also have school resource officers in the elementary school district?
We, we had three. And I recently met with the superintendent. We had about an hour meeting. And that's something they're going to be bringing back to the board, I think, at a later time. They weren't prepared to commit to that, whether it's a financial need or just needs to go in front of their board for further discussion. So at this point, we, we had an officer that we were willing to, to provide. They weren't in the position to commit as of yet.
And these agreements have already been approved by the Santa Maria Joint Union High School District Board of Trustees?
I don't think it's gone to the board. I think it's going, yeah, I think it's all going here relatively.
Oh, after this.
Yeah. And like I said, I reached out to the superintendent who went and reached back out to his constituents there. And, and that was the conversation we had recently.
Thank you.
And, and meetings I've had with the superintendent at other meetings, and, and this has been going for some, some time, he's just saying, we need that resource officer on campus. They're really, we're really concerned.
And I know they like having.
I'm glad we can do it.
And just having the marked patrol unit at the front of the campus is just, you know, something that we haven't had in a long time. And it's been probably the last year, they've been coming to me regularly, asking, can, when can we get back? And we've been doing it sort of on a trial basis, having our school resource officers the last month of school go on campus during their breaks, just to be a visual deterrent. Because the end of the school year has always seemed to get a little squirrely with all those students. So.
You know, it's interesting, and I, I go on the El Camino campus quite a bit. And I would see pictures of Officer Wheeler in practice. I mean, he was a star there. And even the kids would say, do you know Officer Wheeler? Whenever I'd go on campus. And there would be pictures of him in different classrooms. So I, I know that he did have a very positive effect on the kids there.
And our two officers that were selected, they're, they're local. They've grown up in the community. So I think they're going to be a great fit. They understand the community very well. And the school district and the administration obviously is an important part of those relationships. So I think it's going to be a good thing.
Okay. Any other questions? You wanted a separate vote on this?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm fine.
I will put in first for the, the other, or this topic first.
Let's do this one first. Did you want to make the motion?
No. I, I guess I'll, is it discussion time? Okay. So I, this is a tough one for me. I'm very much appreciative of our officers and everything that they're doing in our community, especially with their partnership with the school district. And, and I do agree that we need to have great relationships with, with community members. And I can, I can see this as being that. But I also do have concerns about the school to prison pipeline. I have concerns about, from what I've seen in other departments, when there are incidences of, of emergency, what we have seen time and time again, for instance, in school shootings, that the harm is still caused even with school resources, resource officers there on campus. And so the last thing I want to do is, is perpetuate, like I said, the school to prison pipeline, is make our school systems feel, our students feel like, like they are being watched or that, or that they are being seen as criminals and really find ways for restorative practices. And I also want to acknowledge the fact that this is a request coming from the school district. And that, that is also ultimately up to their discretion and that is not our discretion to make on how, what practices they use. But I just want to make that comment before we move forward with the vote, Madam Mayor.
Well, I will put, I'll put forward the motion that the agree with the school districts for law enforcement services on the Santa Maria Joint Union High School District. Do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, it's moving in second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
No.
Okay, for the, the rest of the consent calendar.
I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye. Moving on to the regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
City Council will consider approving an agreement to receive reimbursement funds from Measure A North County Subregion Program for the citywide school crossing improvement project.
Staff report is to be made by Director of Public Works, Mr. Brett Filigoni.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for your time this evening. Here to provide you with a brief presentation of a project that we have coming up. And a portion of the funding for this project is for consideration this evening. So during the presentation, I'll provide you with a brief project summary. We'll go through outreach efforts, funding sources. We'll take a look at the project vicinity map and then a couple notable examples for discussion. So why are we doing this project? We know, our engineers know that the highest incidence of pedestrian vehicle collisions occur at mid-block and uncontrolled intersections. And engineering back in 2019, led by Mark Mueller, our principal civil engineer, took this project upon himself in the initiative to, to work on this project. And it's been years in, in the making. We made it a department goal to, to complete this project. And our project goal is simply to improve the pedestrian safety of our students and their families. So how do we do this? We do it by improving visibility and accessibility at crosswalks located at uncontrolled intersections. And that these crosswalks are typically locations where drivers aren't anticipating there to be pedestrian traffic. We're trying to leverage, you know, this, these are more of the low-hanging fruit that we see. We're trying to leverage our dollar to get the most value for the dollar that we spend. Installation of ADA ramps at crosswalks. And also notable that the project's in alignment with our adopted local roadway safety plan that we adopted last year, that the council adopted last year. There are other projects that we're working on, notably Donovan and Western, that require further engineering, further funding, become separate projects that are outside of this project. So really, what's before you is, is, as I said, the low-hanging fruit. So some outreach efforts that we wanted to highlight. We met with the school principals. We met with district staff, namely Javier Cavazos, their maintenance person with the school. We worked with each school in their district to discuss and observe concerns. We went out there firsthand and observed those concerns with them during peak hours so that we could make sure that we understand everything that they're trying, you know, the issues that they're having and not just viewing it from our perspective. We also are working to, you know, have open lines of communication so that we can continue to make improvements and that we don't just stop with this project, but that we're continuing that relationship in order to further those goals. So SB CAG, here's a, excuse me, a brief overview of funding. The SB CAG agreement will fund $112,000. We have H-SIP funding, and then we also have gas tax for Safe House to School, which will fund the project. So here's a, a brief map of project vicinity. You can see the projects are sprinkled throughout the city. There's going to be 55 crossing improvements and 72 ADA ramps that'll be impacted by this project. And just four examples of the many that are going to be completed. But we wanted to highlight these examples because this one in particular is, it changed because of the outreach, right? We were going to make the improvement where you see the red X. That was something like, hey, we can make the improvement here. But after talking with the schools, we collectively agreed that it made more sense to move the crosswalk and make the improvement elsewhere. So. And you'll see just some.
Mr. Filigoni, excuse me. Mr. Escobedo has a question.
Yeah, can you repeat that part about on Tiberos?
Sure.
It was going to be there, but not.
Yeah. So, so originally, we, engineering had thought, let's go ahead and improve this crosswalk because, you know, that's what we thought needed to be done. But after discussions and outreach with the school, observing conditions, it was determined that this would be a better location. And so I just wanted to highlight that we changed the locations due to those discussions with the schools.
Oh, yeah. I saw the, I see the, now the arrow. That was moved from this point to the next.
Right.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
So just some existing conditions for your reference. Originally, we proposed these improvements and since changed that. So. Crosswalk was added with coordination with the school and the former principal. Again, we just observed the issues and tried to make the best decisions collectively. Existing conditions, no crosswalk. Proposed improvements. And then example three, it's fairly obvious what's going on here. We have no curb ramps. I love this one. It reminds me of, City Manager Stillwell gave me a gift at Christmas time. It's a, a little calendar that says you had one job. And this reminds me of that for some, it's just kind of funny because we put a crosswalk into someone's driveway. And it's like, you know, probably not the best location. So we're going to be relocating this in order to try and eliminate that conflict. Questions?
Any questions from the council? Yes, Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first, I would like to highlight a comment that, that you made in regards to recognizing engineer Mark Mueller. I think that's from director. That's, I appreciate it when somebody. I think that's from director, that's, I appreciate it when somebody, leader, in a leadership position, recognize the leadership of somebody within it. So that's, I applaud that. And so are we setting any lights or sort of something like that in any of those crosswalkings?
So we do have other projects where we're doing lighting, but it's outside of this project. These are, as I said, striping improvements, ADA improvements. The ones that are lit require more engineering, more consideration, more funding. So for example, the Donovan and Western crossing that we're working on, it's something that we know is important to complete, but requires more engineering, more outreach, more thoughtful designing, more money. And so that'll happen outside of the project. But there will be other improvements that are on top of this.
Yep, yeah, because as I've seen many times, that people just go flying, and a light has, I have seen that it's more likely for somebody to stop. So I think it's, we can, hopefully, we can look into that. And you mentioned Western, you're talking about norwester, straight on the north side?
Yes, Western and Donovan.
Western and Donovan, yeah, that's a conflicted one. So, yeah, that's pretty much what I had, and thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or written communications?
Madam Mayor, we do not have any.
I'd like to bring this item back to the council for any discussion and a motion. Ready to make a motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Next item will be a report by the City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a brief summary of the upcoming meeting of the City Council, August 15th is the next meeting. We're pleased to have a proclamation for Patty Boyd, for all the work she's done in the community and Alan Hancock. We'll have, bring back the report on financing facility improvements, an update on where we are on that. We'll also return with the annual board appointments. There's additional applications we see, received from the last council meeting where there were some vacancies. We'll have a public hearing on the CDPG funding priorities and the fourth quarter financial report. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll go to reports from council members. Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I was gone for a week of, between the last council meeting and this one, and really the only thing I've done that's reportable is, yesterday, I attended the Community Needs Workshop that dealt primarily with CDPG. And it was interesting, informative, and summed up what my good friend Larry Lavignino, Mayor Larry Lavignino, would say, is that these people at CDPG have a very hard job, and it seems like we have a million dollars' worth of requests, and we only get a half a million dollars to divvy up. And there's just somebody not going to get served. And it's very, very difficult, because I think most of them, if not all of them, have a worthy cause to have the money and pursue their programs. But that was very interesting and very well handled by the CDPG people.
Thank you. Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On July 19, I attended Quarterly Schools Meeting. On Sunday, the 23rd, I attend the Farm Work Care Resource Center Project Campesino kickoff On the 24th, I attend the Pioneer Park Discussion Meeting. On the 25th, I attend the, an event, Industry Mixer at Guadalupe. I think that's, yeah, that's pretty much. Thank you.
Ms. Aguilar Hernandez?
Yes. I attended the Ben Hayes Show, and I attended the enrobing for local Judge Karen O'Neal, which is very nice. And I was also out of town for a few days, which was nice to get away.
Thank you. Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On July 19th, Wednesday, I attended the Quarterly Schools Meeting. Thank you, Mr. Hackelman, for your support there. On Friday, July 21st, I attended the Mobile Home Park Resident Meeting Follow-Up. And those are all the reportable items I have for today, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. On July 18th, I did the Ben Hayes Show. On the 19th of July, I attended the 3CE Breakfast. That, 3CE is the electrical collaboration that we are a part of. On the 21st, I attended the enrobing of ceremony Karen O'Neal, and Ms. Aguilar Hernandez gave a few remarks, which I was out of the loop on. We have more women on the bench now, don't we, in Santa Barbara County?
Yes.
And that, including Karen O'Neal. On July 25th, I attended the CPUC Hearing on Diablo Canyon Power Plant Extension. On the 27th of July, the Joint Cities County Affordable Housing Task Force. And on the 28th, I did the Rick Blameier Show, where I talk about all the different city issues that they ask me about. On the 30th, I attended the Concerts in the Park, and I just happen to have a schedule here. We have August 6th, August 13th, August 20th, and 27th. So attend the concerts in the park, and you can be part of the group. On the 31st, I attended, I did a thriving youth invitation, interviews. In the evening, I also attended the Community Needs Workshop for CDPG. I think one of the things that was really important, one woman came up and made the remark on the one group that we grant, and I can't remember the name, but they do repairs for seniors. And she says, my 95-year-old grandmother needed a repair that none of us could do, and she's got 30 grandchildren, because she wants to stay in her home, and so she was able to have these repairs done. And I think that is a great testimony. Communicate. That is a great testimony to the work that is done out there. And I will adjourn this meeting so we can go to National Night Out.